So yeah, thanks everyone for joining. If it's your first one or if you're returning, welcome. I'll give you a bit of overview of kind of how these work and then we'll get some discussion going. So I really don't want to before to all be mine on just kind of the facilitator here. So just a little intro on the event itself. So at least for me, the goal is really, how can we as individuals, but also together make some positive changes in our society? And obviously, the lens that I've had here is sustainability kind of broadly. So thinking about having that is kind of the pillar of all of our discussion. How we can really think about our environments and sustainability, but also as a broader concept that encompasses things like social justice, inequalities, racial justice. I think it's all kind of fits under that term for me. So it's not really narrowly defined as environmental side, but obviously that's a big component of it. So we're really trying to think about actions and solutions overall in this in the round table tonight. So we'll kind of end off on that format. But we'll try to get some discussion going. Just a little recap from last meeting, we kind of ended up talking about how our career choice is actually a really impactful way to or a way to have a big impact by, you know, choosing a career that's gonna move towards something that's sustainable, whether you're working in, you know, promoting sustainable energy uses, or whether you're thinking about social justice or poverty or all these things, your career has a big impact. So thinking about some sort of action solutions, we kind of thought about career. And then obviously interpersonal circles, how you can spread information throughout those circles, educate your friends, or just be more proactive in that way. So finally, just getting towards yeah, tonight what we want to talk about it, it's kind of open to, but I had a few ideas I I just want to mention, we have Christian here with us tonight. So he's he has a lot of experience working in communities and with governments and stuff. He's a city councillor. So it'd be cool to get his perspective, at least on some of these ideas and issues and being on the ground with them or working in government and thinking about those channels to to change and sustainability. Maybe he has some good insights because we have talked about in the past, this role of government at the political side of sustainability, how whether that's a very good channel to change. I know that we talked with Sue and she was pretty adamant that you know, you can actually really have these big effects on your communities by by going through political roots and by working in government. So maybe I'll kind of, I don't know, bring that question up again, though, like how how effective is government for for sustainability and change and environmental change? Or what other sorts of routes can we think about? And even within government, what are the differences with? You think about the different scales, whether it's local, you know, provincial or state or federal, like what kind of differences are there between governments as well to like, where can we have a big impact? I know that thinking or discussing before about this too, we you know, sure, there's a lot of stuff we can do as an individual, but also, how can we get those changes happening on a bigger scale? Because can only do so much like, oh, I can do my whole part and have kind of a clean, clean slate and be vegan and not drive and whatever, but that's not really enough considering kind of the scope and the scale of the problem. So I guess, opening up the floor discussion around this idea of government's role and whether that's a good channel for affecting change and also whether the different scales of government itself are have an impact on that too. I don't know. Does anyone have any ideas on that idea?
I'd be interested to hear what Christian has to say.
Sure. Yeah. Hey, guys. My name is Christian. I'm the city councillor for the Loyola district in, so like the western half of NDG. And I'm here because Toby basically just reached out to me a few weeks ago. He sent me an email and we had a good discussion over the phone and 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 I guess that's a positive note to start on because sometimes it really is that easy and that straightforward. A lot of people often wonder how to get involved and how to make changes. And sometimes it's really as easy as picking up the phone and calling someone and asking questions. So thanks Toby for for reaching out and thanks for inviting me to join you for one of these. I told you I'd eventually make it. It took me a while, but here I am. Yeah, a lot of this stuff we discussed one on one. It's, I mean, you know, there's that saying in French like tout est dans tout, right? Like everything's kind of connected to everything else. But I guess to kind of recap a couple of things, one of the main reasons that I got involved in politics is because I felt that it offered the greatest opportunities to and the greatest potential to actually affect positive change in society. That's when things go well and when things work out. And that holds true for sustainability and environmental policy as well. The reason why I became passionate, well, one of the reasons why I became passionate about the city level is because I'm convinced that cities have a leading role to to play, not just with climate change over the next century, but with a whole slew of issues and challenges that national governments and subnational governments have shown they're not really equipped to deal with. So, so oh, boy, I'm sorry. I don't know if you guys can hear that, but I've got my neighbor downstairs who has started practicing their instrument. So you let me know if I need to move and so so yeah, I guess one of the big challenges as far as government action is concerned, especially in Canada, is the fact that we just have, we have so many, right? We've got federal, provincial, municipal. We have this emerging form of metropolitan governance that covers areas like the GTA, the Greater Montreal area as well, the or what's known as the Montreal Metropolitan Community, which is actually, I think it's 82 different municipalities covering about half the population of the province. So I guess one of the biggest challenges is figuring out how to align everyone's energies and priorities in a way that can actually enable us to to accomplish much more than if we were working alone. A lot of the stuff that we're working on at the local level, like it's great and it's it's useful and helpful. I think Toby and I spoke about our local Sustainable Development Plan. We've got a plan local de déplacement that's in the works, the idea being let's find ways of encouraging people to get around other than by car, especially when we're we're looking at trips done within the neighborhood. But to use that as an example, becomes a lot easier to have that work out if we also have federal carbon price that actually reflects the cost of polluting, which it doesn't currently. It's nowhere near reflecting the cost of putting a ton of carbon into the atmosphere. So yeah, I guess coordination between different levels of government is is a really big challenge. But that does not take away from a lot of the things that we can do locally, not just on the greenhouse gas emissions front, but things like waste reduction. Things like sustainable building practices. There are a lot of things that cities can do that where they don't have to wait for other levels of government to catch up. And and you know, we're seeing the same thing in the States right now, in particular, a lot of mayors have just said, you know what? Forget it. If if we're in a red state and our legislature doesn't believe in climate change, well, we're gonna go ahead anyway, and we're not going to wait for the feds either. So a lot of good things can happen locally. And yeah, I'll I'll end it there for now. And if if you guys want to get into any more specific topics or questions, then feel free to ask.
Yeah, I guess, thank you. I'll go ahead, Don.
No, I was just gonna say something of platitude. No, I thought that was, I thought that was interesting to take. But yeah, but one thing that I'm curious is like, how, like suppose there is some kind of we need to get a, let's say, a tax on carbon so that it better reflects the price. How do you envisage that happening? Like, do you think that's going to come more from the grassroots or federal government will one day just change their mind or? And like, what roles do local governments have in that? Like, if people are protesting on St. Catherine's, say, like, I don't know, I'm just curious what your thoughts are because I literally don't know anything, but.
Fair question. Yeah. I mean, cities can can certainly have a have an influencing role. You know, we can, for example, city council will often pass motions or debate motions that don't actually have that much to do with city government, but we're calling on the province or the the federal government to do something. When it comes to an accurate carbon price, I do think that the first and biggest hurdle has been overcome, which is just putting it in place to begin with. And and I say this as someone, you know, and just personally, my 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 personal politics are such that I really want to see a much, a much more rapid increase in the carbon price. But you have to give credit where credit's due and bringing in something that has been vilified politically, especially in North America for years now, despite the fact that it's probably the most economically efficient way of pricing pollution. That was a really, really big step. So I think the way to the way to hike it up, to increase it is, I mean, a lot of my answers are going to go back to this. It comes down to political organizing and political pressure. Because at the end of the day, the government is is going to make the moves that they think fall within a certain window of 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 political acceptability. And and oftentimes, if they're not doing that more quickly, it's because they've made a political calculation that that basically states that now is not the time. I think there are ways of getting involved both in party politics and just in grassroots organizations that can really, you know, hold their feet to the fire and say that it's long past time. And especially when you consider that raising the carbon tax is not even, not even really a partisan issue when you look at policy wise. Like, there are plenty of people who qualify in Canada as conservative, who say like, by by all means, let's raise the carbon tax. It's pollution is a bad thing. You can't like, nobody can deny that. So let's raise the carbon tax. Let's cut taxes on income. Let's cut taxes on investment. Let's, let's make it revenue neutral. There's so many different ways to go about it. We just need to organize to to push the government to act sooner rather than later. Easier said than done, of course.
Yeah, I mean, because it's interesting. I think, yeah, the government should be reflecting at least like the views and the what the people want. And I guess what you're saying is we need to let them know that, but I think, I don't know, maybe like I think there is some level of the government's definitely lacking in terms of what they can be doing proactively to to help. And and I think a lot of people's views on it would agree with that, but it's just not, the fact is not happening. It's kind of frustrating, especially, yeah, thinking of our federal government not really reflecting that either, like this kind of going with the status quo. So.
I think it's important to keep in mind, and and this is like, without wanting to like digress too much into like political psychology or anything like that. Generally speaking, when it comes to elections, people vote based on the party leader and the party brand. Those are like the two big things that really determine the way someone votes. Most people don't vote based on policy. They don't vote for or against someone because they say, we're gonna put in a carbon tax or we're gonna raise the carbon tax or not. They vote leader, they vote brand, and they vote values to a certain extent, which are reflected in the first two. So to say that the 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 federal government does not really, has not really heard us and our desire for a higher carbon tax. I mean, I'm sure they're well aware of of, you know, roughly what percentage of Canadians would be in favor and all that, you know, all the polling data, right? But governments take election victories as a mandate to implement their platform broadly. And that 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 doesn't always mean moving forward on certain key issues. And for every government that we've had in recent years, there are examples of that, right? Promises that weren't kept, things that didn't happen quickly enough. So that's part of the challenge is how to make our desire for this like green shift, how to make that known and heard through this cacophony of different voices expressing different interests and needs and priorities. That's the challenge.
Yeah. What are some of those? I'm interested in what are some of those barriers on a very kind of yeah, concrete level, like why, you know, just why is this stuff not happening? Is it very? I know Sue mentioned last time she had a lot of ideas or things she saw that wasn't working necessarily, but there's a whole, a whole set of kind of like administrative and bureaucracy things that obviously are put in place, obviously, to prevent people from mistreating it. But at the same time, if the the government and the systems in place aren't able to to handle the changes needed, how can, what are some of the barriers within that, you know, that that you see? I don't know.
Inertia mostly. Government is is, you know, if you ask like, say, 99 out of 100 politicians even, and and, you know, probably 100 out of 100 civil servants, they say that the point of government is not to move quickly. You know, that that saying like move, move fast and break things like that is the antithesis of most government. Government takes its time. That's why policy is so important, right? We take time to elaborate and to plan out policy, which then determines government actions so that when we do get around to doing something, the idea is that we'll, you know, there will be more winners than losers and step by step, slowly but surely will advance. Granted, that's like, I guess, a very kind of centrist, progressive, liberal way of way of seeing it. But, you know, at the end of the day, I think the biggest obstacle is really the fact that, you know, government is made up of people. And people need to be brought on board. It's not just the public that needs to be brought on board. You know, there are what we call like internal constituencies, right? You need to win over employees. You need to develop policy to say, okay, well, if we're gonna start doing things differently, how are we gonna do them? We've only got the rules and the processes and the policies that we have in place now. And yeah, we can look at what's being done elsewhere and incorporate that into our way of doing things, but that takes time. You know, because we're not some agile startup or anything like that. People are counting on us to keep the, you know, the water free of any pollutants and pick up the trash and do a thousand and one other things that fall under the purview of a city with a six and a half billion dollar annual budget. So government is slow to shift. Once you get the shift done, if you do it right, then I'm convinced that the sky's the limit. If I wasn't convinced that the sky's the limit, I probably wouldn't be doing this job. But doing the shift and making that turn or turning the ship of state, as they say, that that's the, that's the challenge. And that's where a lot of people, a lot of parties, a lot of leaders, I think, often run up against a wall. But if you can pull it off, good things can happen.
I'm sure there's also some people who are kind of actively against some of the stuff we want. Although maybe I'm just being paranoid, but I don't know, like heads of fossil fuel companies. I'm sure there are Canadian mining companies and fossil fuel companies that aren't super D for people raising the carbon tax. I don't think it's just, you know, the government's like, oh, I know everyone wants it, but we gotta fill out the right forms. I'm sure there's a little, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, that that, I mean, it's, it's, it's absolutely true. I think I think government inertia is the biggest challenge. I don't think it's the only one. And and, you know, a large part of like the art of politics is like balancing out all these different groups, right? That's, that's what makes it, that's what makes it so difficult. I think Toby and I talked about this a little bit on our call and like the thing with politics is that if an issue was easy to deal with or take care of, chances are it wouldn't make it into the political arena to begin with. Politics is where conflict happens. Politics is where different needs and wants and priorities come up against, you know, each other and those of different groups. So the fact that there are groups of people, both in and outside of the government, that don't believe that, you know, an environmental change needs to be made, that's definitely an obstacle. But having seen the way that it works on the inside over the past three years, I'm convinced that that's actually not the biggest one. The the oil execs as as, you know, retrograde as they are, that's, that's not the biggest problem. It's it's, it's, it's making that pivot and getting everyone or close to everyone in government kind of rowing in the same direction in order to make that change. But yeah, the mining execs are a problem too.
I've got a question, Christian, if you can hear me. Yeah. How useful would you find going to court for such things would be like, to give you a couple of examples, in terms of green politics? Because you've given, I can name one example locally in the plateau, the the projects want to remove billboards and everything, and they litigated for like 10 years on on doing something, and they had to go to courts and became like a whole free speech issue, you know, to do what amounts to just removing visual pollution in the city. And if you look, I don't know if it was Quebec courts or Canadian courts, but they had sued the tobacco industry for knowingly poisoning people and advertising such things for you know, decades or a century or whatever. And that cost them like $15 billion. And it's done through legitimate respected means through through the courts in a, you know, in a free country, more or less. So yeah, I'm just wondering, like, in terms of green politics, do you think like that would be a way forward? Go to the courts? I mean, these people knowingly poisoned us, they, you know, the auto industry knew how polluting their cars. They they knew internally about global warming and accepted it as fact and was a concern to them, but they did, they did nothing about it. So cars continue to increase in size. And so, not to say they did little, nothing, they did little, they did little, but they haven't done enough. And they continue to promote their products and everything. And so, anyway, yeah, my question is basically like, is using the Supreme Court like a way to to get ahead in terms of green policies and regulating zoning even at a national level or, you know, emissions?
Good question. Tough question. I don't have, I don't have much experience in the legal system in general, and for every
Need a lawyer, consultant lawyer on that or something. Yeah.
Yeah.
Name two.
It's, it's, because the, I guess, my initial take is that it can really go either way. Again, when things spend years in court, when issues in cases spend years in court, it's often because, once again, you know, the law is not clear. There are, you know, wants that are in pretty much direct opposition to one another. And sometimes you win, and sometimes you lose. Going to court is also insanely expensive. Not that that is, you know, in and in and of itself a disqualifying factor, but it's slow, it's expensive, and it often achieves at the same ends that could be more readily achieved through legislation. And keep in mind that, you know, for every government that wants to go to court against someone else, like in private industry, there's also private industry going after the government. As we speak, the mayor of Montreal is being sued. Or the city of Montreal, sorry, is being, is being sued. Actually, I think it might be both. Is being sued for making it clear that we will not allow suburban development to happen in the West Island. You know, there was a whole, a whole new subdivision planned in Pierrefonds West. And it was gonna, it was gonna be given the go ahead under the last administration. And we came in and Mayor Valerie basically said, no, not happening. We're gonna make it a park. That's millions and millions, if not tens of millions of dollars in lost profits for a developer. And they just won't have that. One of the biggest challenges for sustainability in cities is that we have these speculators and developers that buy up land at like basement rates and then just sit on them for ages until they can turn them into another cookie cutter subdivision. And when cities throw sticks in the wheels, they bring us to court. I've had people threaten to take us to court for removing parking. Like, this is, this is real. Like, this happens. It and and it's not just here, right? Like Montreal, you know, I love Montreal, but it's not different from other cities in in terms of like how people think about these issues for the most part. So government can go the legal route. I think it's long and expensive. But private industry and private interests can also go the legal route, and that can be incredibly expensive to the public as well. So I don't know, bit of a toss up. I'd love to hear lawyers' take on it because I'm not a lawyer. So, yeah, thanks for the question, though.
Thanks. I have a question that was kind of alluded to. What about this whole housing issue? It seems like it's becoming just worse and worse the longer I live. Like, I keep hearing from people like, oh, housing prices are shooting up in Ottawa, Toronto, Montreal, everywhere. So like, can't the city like, you know, stop that from happening? Like, this is kind of anyways.
Yeah, this is, this is something that's taken up more of my attention since since coming into office. There are a couple of things here. Off the top of my head, first is that we tend not to plan development and mobility together. We tend to look at them separately and in a very narrow kind of way. We're trying to change this at the city, but basically, you know, if if you have no way to get to a future subdivision other than by highway in a car, nobody's gonna stop you from building it for the most part. Like, yeah, there are some laws in place and not supposed to use fertile farmland and stuff like that. But at the end of the day, it's not because there's no suburban rail line or metro that you won't be able to 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 build a new subdivision. The other one is that we've had a very poor understanding of density, I think, especially in North America. You know, there are some cities in the world that are really livable, really wonderful places. Yeah, they have their share of problems, but they have a human density that actually allows people to get around basically any way other than by car. It allows people to support local businesses. And and it makes it like possible, just economically possible for more and more different kinds of businesses to to set themselves up in an urban setting. And, you know, as a result, if you do that right, the quality of life can easily outmatch pretty much anything that we have in North America. So yeah, that that's something where I think we're, we're really, we're learning really slowly how to do that, right? And one of the big challenges there is that even here in Montreal, we have a lot of neighborhoods that Montrealers consider to be dense and relatively urban neighborhoods. I often hear people calling NDG a dense urban neighborhood. NDG is not a dense urban neighborhood. This is like, people who call NDG a dense urban neighborhood have no, like, I wanted to tell, like, go visit Paris, go visit London. Go visit virtually any old city in Europe where the old cores, you know, we're talking like three, four stories on average, if not minimum. Just got so much more foot traffic. You've got a human density. Just got so much more foot traffic. You've got a human density. So that's, that's really, that's a big part of it.
I like the thing in Benny, you know, that new relatively new thing?
Yeah.
Benny Park. That seems like a good thing, but-
It's a step in the right direction. Yeah. A lot of those units, and again, some of the problems that we have with, with our programs in Quebec and Montreal is that they'll maintain, they'll, they'll ensure a certain degree of affordability for the first buyer. And then they basically go right back into the speculative market. And one of the issues is that the city of Montreal, yeah, I know, it, it makes, it makes no sense. The city of Montreal does not have enough legal authority to actually regulate the housing market or the real estate market. And, and again, this is, once again, something that happens a lot in the Canadian and North American context is that private property is very much sacrosanct. And so even for the city to try and acquire property through right of first refusal or heaven forbid expropriation becomes insanely expensive. So without, I think without a fundamental restructuring of our housing market, including the, you know, the pairing of future dense housing development and, you know, mixed use neighborhoods and all the things that urban planning tells us we should have been doing for the last 70 years, but we didn't. It's, yeah, pairing that with transportation options, sustainable transportation options. Like that's, that's basically the way out. But in order to really change the market, we need the provincial government on board at a bare minimum. And I don't see that happening anytime soon. So the only opportunity we have at the metropolitan level is to try and structure and plan out future developments so that it'll happen in a more sustainer, uh, sustainable and healthier way than the last 70 years or so. With some exceptions, right? There's like, there are the Bennys. There, there are some redevelopments that have been really interesting across town. We're hoping to do the same thing for the Nemiro Hippodrome area, the old Bluebonnets, which is gonna have thousands of new housing units. And the OCPM recently released their, their report on that and that's really fascinating stuff. Now, at least because there are alternative housing models that, um, that were really promoted by, by community groups in particular that, that involve non-market housing. Some really cool potential for development there.
That sounds good. It just seems like a troubling trend though, you know, all these huge condos going up and it's like, you know, regular people can't afford them and it's just foreign investors buying them and like, maybe this is just my kinda, it's not actually true, but I feel like it's a little bit true.
In some neighborhoods in Montreal, it does put pressure. It's always pronounced as in Vancouver and Toronto. You know, at the end of the day, I think there, like there are a few other things too, right? Demand is clearly outstripping supply. But also making changes to the market is, you know, there's the regulatory side, there's the zoning side to it as well, right? You know, single family zoning is typically not very dense, like it can't be, right? Because you typically have one household per lot. And I grew up, I grew up on, you know, on Bellmore in a semi-detached house, like so many, uh, many in NDG. And, uh, you know, I've often given people the example that my dad still lives in that house alone. You know, he's got, he's got like 2,300 square feet to himself. And, and that's where he's comfortable and that's, you know, a big chunk of his, his retirement and his nest egg and stuff. So the, the system that we're in basically traps homeowners into wanting to maintain the value of their property as well. Because if they don't, well, they've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars over the years on ensuring that they can own their own home and we can't just go cutting into that. So it's, it's really like, it, it's a really nasty systemic problem and zoning contributes to that as well. Although again, there are some encouraging signs. I think it was the Twin Cities, uh, Minneapolis, I can't remember which, but there was a city in the States over the last year, year and a half that abolished single family zoning across the entire city. They said, listen, you have a single family house, that's fine, you can keep it. But should someone move in next door and decide they want to subdivide? Or they want to expand within the limits allowed by our other zoning laws? And they wanna have two households living on that same plot of land? They'll be allowed to do it and, you know, you can't complain. So that's, that's a big step in the right direction and it's a big psychological step, uh, step, especially for the middle class and, you know, the home owning middle class.
Yeah, that's an interesting lens or one lens that I like to take, especially having studied urban planning. I think when we think about sustainability and the way our cities and our communities are organized, we can kind of have a big impact there. And like one thing you mentioned, the, you know, zoning for single families, it's literally written in the law that, you know, you can't have a high density. So we'll pick this up. The meeting's about to end, so I don't wanna get cut off, but if you can just join back into this meeting, then it should work.
Cool.
Little micro break?
A lot of the issues, the specific issues that often get people involved, especially from an environmental standpoint. You know, like going into this, I, I didn't appreciate the impact that housing as a broad issue had on sustainable development. It's not something that gets talked about, especially at the, the federal and provincial levels. It's only been recently that it's really, it's really become much more clear to me that so much of what we do in housing and so many of our local laws prevent us from building more sustainable neighborhoods.
So if we think practically about this idea, um, what are some of the, the barriers to that? If you say, yeah, the federal government or provincial government doesn't necessarily even think about it. But if we hear, we know on the local level, you know, there's some things we can do. What's been holding us back or how can we, we go about that? Obviously, I think, yeah, the mayor, even just, it takes some sort of courage to, to say like, no, we're not gonna stick with the status quo or no, we're not gonna let, you know, Valerie saying, no, we're not gonna uh, let you guys build this whole suburban tract that, uh, that doesn't make sense for us, but does it really, is that what it needs to take? Like the mayor's level or, or what sort of level or what, what, uh, yeah, how can we, we go about that in terms of thinking about housing and, and building more sustainability, sustainable within cities? Cause I, Dylan brought this up to another discussion because also in thinking about the Bluebonnet, right? Like that project needs to make sense for what we actually need. Like, do we need a hotel there? Do we need these things? Like the most sustainable thing to do with the site would probably depending, or the most environmentally sound thing to do is to not build anything, cause that has a huge impact. But so how do those types of decisions get made or how can we make those happen in a more sustainable way?
Yeah, good point about Bluebonnets, cause obviously, you know, construction does have its own environmental footprint. And in, in situations like this, I think we just have to keep in mind that if we don't build it right across, basically right across to carry from a metro station, then someone's gonna build it out in the burbs. And they're gonna have the same number of people spread out on an area about 10 or 20 times the size. So you kind of have to, have to figure that, you know, so long as we need to build more housing, we might as well go with the best option. As for how to get things done, I mean, I've come to believe, things can happen locally. Good things can happen locally and the example of that is not just the plateau, but Rosemont to a certain degree, uh, the Southwest. Like they were able to do things over the span of eight years when they only controlled the local borough or projet, obviously, um, only controlled the local borough. They, in some cases at least, had a fairly hostile city administration. You know, Luke Ferandes was Denis Cadda's favorite boogeyman. And, and yet with strong executive leadership, they were able to do some pretty incredible things. And the result of that is that these days the plateau far outstrips pretty much everywhere else in town for the number of trips made on foot or by bike. So, you know, the, the, the results, you really see them in the statistics several years later, but we're seeing it now. And, um, and so whether it's at the city level or the borough level, because each of them has, you know, their different jurisdictions. I'm convinced that strong executive leadership can do incredible things in a short period of time. And that's another difference between the city and provincial and, and federal, right? Provincially and federally, like you, you have like a once in a generation opportunity to make such massive changes in the span of one mandate that it'll actually start being felt immediately. But at the city level, you, you really can do that. That's one of the cool things about cities. It's that it's our built environment. It's the day-to-day services that we get, the facilities we use, the ways we get around. So there's huge power in that. Obviously it helps if you have strong executive leadership that's backed up by, you know, legislative support on council. And, but, but I mean, I, I really do think that, you know, I look at what Ferandes did in the plateau and granted, you know, most of the time he did it while giving the finger to anyone who disagreed with him. And that, that was, you know, depending on who you ask, either a problem or not. There was someone who often wasn't in the headlines, but who arguably did just as much in Rosemont La Petite Patrie and that's François Crotto, the mayor of Rosemont, who, who, who did very similar things to Luke, but with a very different style. One that was very much appreciated by residents, um, but didn't make for as good tabloid fodder. And, um, and you know, there are examples of that locally all over the place. But something that I've learned, especially over the last year or so, is that it really does take the executive. It takes the mayor. If you don't have the mayor or if the mayor is distracted or unfocused or doesn't know a thing about governance and how to run government and how to oversee government, you're gonna go nowhere fast. And I think that's something that often ends up happening is people come into office who have the best intentions of the world, good people, good people, really good people. But they don't know how to be deliberate and strategic and focused and exercise, um, how to exercise executive leadership. And that's, that's a big challenge because you don't know that most of the time before people get into the office, right? People can be good candidates. They could be good in other walks of life or in other careers. But then they get into office and you realize, oh boy, like we, we don't, like, I don't know what to do. And, uh, and so for every Luke Ferandes or François Crotto, you have, you have, you know, several, several people who kind of fall on the other end. So it's a challenge. You need, you need strong executive leadership, not just elected. You need to have good directors. You need to have good senior civil servants. And I know that both Ferandes and Crotto in their first term, I think maybe in some cases it kind of spilled over into the second, like heads rolled. You know, there, there were, there were departmental directors. They basically said, listen, you either do what we want or we will find someone who will, you know? You don't wanna put in speed bumps. You don't wanna put in sidewalk extensions, curb extensions. You don't wanna change the direction of streets to prevent through traffic. Fine. Like good luck in your next job. My job is not to, to, to keep you here for as long as you like, regardless of your disagreements. We have a mandate and we're saying, get the damn thing done. So when you find, when you find an elected leader who's willing to do that and then you find, um, career professionals, professional civil servants who are willing to play ball, that's when the magic happens. And that's, that's really cool to watch.
Thinking about that other side of government that you just mentioned, the, the civil servants themselves and, uh, the administrators and directors and all that. You mentioned how, yeah, they're not the elected ones, so, but they do have a decent amount of, you know, they're the ones actually kind of doing the work on the ground to a certain extent. So how, how do shifts happen in, in that sphere? Cause you know, a lot of times they'll have these people in these roles and maybe they'll stay in the role for, for 20 years or whatever, and they're kind of just doing the same thing year after year and not really willing to change or, you know, whatever it is. So how, how can we think about shifting that side of, of government as well? Cause it's a bit important side too.
Yeah. Um, I guess, yeah, just, just like a point of clarification, in case it wasn't clear. Borough mayor is like, is like the, the, the chairman or the chairwoman of the board of directors, right? The council, a city council or borough council is like the board of directors. And the city manager or, um, in our case, uh, the, what we call the borough director is like the CEO. So elected officials are not elected to run the city. It's a common misconception, one that nobody likes being reminded of because they call elected officials to fix their problems. But elected officials do not run the city. Civil servants run the city. Uh, elected official's job is to oversee, to set the strategic direction, the broad orientations and, and, and to approve certain things, not everything, but certain things that the civil servants wanna do. That's why, you know, the vast majority of the, the files that we approve in, in council in any given month, they're contracts. You know, street paving, garbage pickups, snow removal, they're contracts. And there are a whole slew of things that, that get approved because they're for smaller amounts and we don't ever have to see it because that's just too granular. It's too small. It's too everyday. You can't have the people who are overseeing the machine and setting the, the direction, diving into the details of, you know, a $500 contract here and there. So, so yeah, that's, that's like the division of responsibilities. Those are the two different roles. And again, a lot of people get elected and they don't know that. Some people never learn. So if you have strong political leadership and for whatever reason, you don't feel like the administrative leadership is, is up to par, um, well, that's when you find, that's when you find new managers. That's when you find new executives. And, and it happens, you know, and it often happens fairly amicably. If someone comes in with, um, you know, a really different agenda, part of being a professional civil servant is to often see and know when, when your time has come and just to recognize that, you know what, like, this isn't something I'm gonna be able to do. That's, that's, um, I've seen it happen behind the scenes a couple of times over the last few years. And I mean, it's, it's, it's the mark of a professional civil servant is to say like, no, you know what? This is a new approach. This is a whole different perspective and worldview. And so it's time for me to step aside so that they can find someone who's really gonna be able to execute on this. So that's when it goes well.
Lose their job or something?
Oftentimes they'll, they'll be moved. It's, it's not like they just go immediately into retirement. Like I think of, I think of the boroughs, right? The city of Montreal has 19 boroughs. So if, you know, if someone comes in and says, okay, I want, you know, a new public works director, their current public works director then has the opportunity of, of looking for that kind of work or, or even higher level work in the boroughs, in certain city departments downtown. Like you, you don't have all of your career opportunities, you know, pulled out from under you in one go. I mean, some unlucky people do, but that, I, I, I like to think that that- I mean, some unlucky people do, but that, I, I, I'd like to think that that doesn't happen too often. So that's it. Like I said, um, maybe it's just my experience over the last few years, but I'm convinced that having strong, um, executive leadership. Um, obviously, you know, a strong democratic mandate helps. Um, but strong executive leadership is, is really the, the make or break factor. Because you can do a lot in four years if you know exactly where you wanna go and you have focus and you have discipline. But if you don't, then you'll, you'll, you'll get caught up in the thousand and one things that, that can, that, well, that, that, that basically, you know, come onto your plate as an elected official, especially as a mayor on a daily, daily basis, right? There are always fires to be put out. There are always things that need fixing. You need to really carve out the direction early on strategically so that you can move in the right direction. And that holds doubly true for the sustainable shift, precisely because going back to what I said before, you need to convince people. You need to bring people on board. You need to convince your different teams and, and local organizations and residents that could be afraid of change. It's not an easy task.
Yeah, and thinking about the actual, uh, systems in place themselves within government or how projects happen, not just in government, but I think in our, in capitalist world, right? It's all kind of fueled by where's the money going? What's the money doing? And, um, I was surprised to figure out where our money is kind of going. A lot of it to paying people, a lot of it to, uh, this is talking about the, the local level. A lot of it to like, just paying people obviously to, to work at the city. But then roads and, and, uh, take up a huge chunk. And then when you think about the other things left, it's like there's not that much room, not that much resources put into that. Whereas I think that's where the biggest amount of resources need to be put, at least. If we wanna make a shift that's, that makes sense for us and is more sustainable. Like, are we putting millions of dollars into just repaving a road? Like, is that really the best use of that resource and these resources? I don't, I really don't think so. So, um, thinking about that financial side too. I don't know what your take was on that, having been, uh, in government and on that side and seeing where the money goes. But, uh, you know, yeah, how can we rethink even just how we're allocating our resources?
I think, um, if we're talking about infrastructure, it's different from services. Services, I think, are more adjustable, even though the challenges are huge. Like, you look at the amount of trash that the city of Montreal produces over the course of the year, and it's just, it's insane, you know? So if, if we really wanna make a dent in our, uh, waste production, then we need to, you know, tackle that from multiple angles. Which, as an aside, is why we recently adopted Montreal's new, uh, waste management, uh, master plan. Um, but then, when it comes to infrastructure, what's difficult about infrastructure is that the, the, building it and the infrastructure that we use, it's a notoriously, um, conservative field or industry. And not, not, you know, not big C conservative, not any kind of bad conservative, just conservative because you need to know that the roads are not gonna fall apart. You need to know that the pipes are not gonna burst. So when we find a way of doing things that works, that is safe, and that is relatively economical, we stick with it and then we're slow to change. Now, I've seen some, some cool examples of sustainable steps that have been taken in infrastructure. In fact, I think it was my first, my first, uh, speech in council was basically me geeking out on a new kind of, uh, road foundation of all things. Because, uh, this new kind of construction that's being integrated into certain parts of Griffintown um, allows for more rainwater to percolate through the surface of the road and the foundation of the road and into the ground instead of going into the stormwater sewers. Cause when they go into the sewers, more often than not, the water goes into the water treatment plants. And, uh, it's just more to manage, more to disinfect, more to treat. It's really expensive. Um, it's also not particularly, uh, ecologically friendly. Um, especially given that every now and then the city just dumps a bunch of untreated sewage into the Saint Lawrence River. So if we can avoid doing that, all the better. But again, this is something that was tested. This new road foundation was tested out over years. They did trial runs, trial patches, and not just for one year, not just for one summer, one winter. They did it for years to see how it held up, uh, to regular wear and tear. So, progress on that front is, is incredibly slow because while we do need to make our infrastructure greener, at the same time, you also need to know that when you're driving down the street, you're not gonna fall into a sinkhole. Which, as I'm sure you know, has in fact happened in Montreal a number of times, which is embarrassing. Uh, but that's, that's with, that's with the infrastructure that we know how to build. Um, we can't just go changing it up willy-nilly without the, the, the demonstration being there that it can hold up against the same wear and tear. So that's, um, that's really tough because the overwhelming majority of our capital budget, of our investment budget is in infrastructure. At the same time, I know that, you know, our administration has made progress. Especially when it comes to things like paving. Uh, what administrations have typically done historically is they'll basically just, you know, they'll try to pave, repave as much as possible, as frequently as possible. They lay down like two, three inches of asphalt. Doesn't last very long. It's not economical or sustainable. And what we, uh, the call that we made when we first came in was, as far as downtown is concerned, like roads that are administered by downtown as opposed to the boroughs, all the big ones. We would no longer redo in the exact same way. We're not gonna do things identically. So if we need to do a real repair job or a major patch job, we're gonna find a way of integrating more safety features, integrating more active transit, uh, integrating more greenery, reducing the percentage of, uh, mineralized surfaces, like paved surfaces, any combination, ideally all of the above. Um, with a view to gradually making our surfaces just a little bit greener, a little bit more sustainable. But it's, it's a really slow turn because of the nature, the nature of, uh, of, of, of what we're dealing with. It's infrastructure. It's expensive at the best of times and it has to work. If it doesn't work, especially in, in, you know, in twenty twenty, like, our modern society relies on infrastructure. You cannot have a city without roads. As much as we need fewer cars on those roads, as much as, you know, the perfect city would, would not need ninety percent of the roads that we have now. The fact is, these days, um, the city needs roads, it needs pipes, it needs sewers. And if we're gonna build them, we need to make sure they're gonna hold up. It's tough. We have billions and billions and billions of dollars in infrastructure that we need to fix. And it's a very, very, very slow shift to, uh, more sustainable materials, more sustainable construction. Um, and more sustainable design that actually reduces the need to repair, rebuild, maintain, or, or spend more money just on maintenance and operations. Like, that's one of the cool things about that road foundation, right? Like, the water goes into the ground. You don't have to do anything. It just goes. It disappears. It's great. Uh, but to change all of the streets in Montreal to that kind of road is gonna take us, you know, fifty years. So, we, we go for the wins that we can, that we can identify.
Yeah, well, it's great to hear that, at least in downtown, they've made that shift of any major new road change is gonna, they're not just gonna build the same thing. Cause that's, I don't know what I'm getting at too, is like, we need stuff to be different. Sure, you know, infrastructure, we will still need it no matter what. It's not a question of that, but it's, yeah, how it's designed, how it's built, who it's prioritizing. And definitely the status quo is not the right way. And, and it's kind of, it was disheartening, at least to see a major project in Montreal, which was the Turcot. Basically that same thing of building the same thing again. And it's, it was an opportunity to do something different and, and change and wasn't taken. And we're spending like billions of dollars on that and it's kind of disappointing. So if we think about that change that happened downtown that you mentioned, and how can we make that something that not just downtown, but the other boroughs grab hold of and, and start to implement? Cause you know, I, you know, a lot of us would love to be able to get around safely, uh, on our bikes, walking uh, around our neighborhoods. Um, and the streets that we have now really don't accommodate that. And it's been interesting to see how COVID, you know, people have kind of woken up to that fact that we don't have room to even walk safely anymore. So, how can we get those changes happening, not just downtown, but kind of more widespread?
Well, I think we've, we've seen some possibilities, especially over the course of the summer. Um, I don't know how many, how many of the people on this call actually live in N D G. But if you, if you do, then you probably heard about the Terrebonne Bike Lane debacle. And, uh, not just N D G, if, if you read any English media. So, I think the summer we saw good examples of what can be done quickly to encourage people to, to get out on foot and by bike. And we saw some, uh, some examples of, of what not to do. And one of those examples was right here in N D G. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I've said it a few times already. I think it's a great learning experience. Gotta learn from our mistakes. Um, but, you know, the fact, the fact is, there are lots of things that we can do. Um, I think that recognizing that what we consider, what many people consider to be bike lanes or the existing bike network, for example, is not really much of a bike network. Um, as far as I'm concerned, if you only have painted lines on a street, then that's not, that's not a safe bike path. It's just a lane. And all it takes is a door opening and you fall into vehicle traffic. I think that, you know, I, I take a lot of my cues from, uh, what's known as guerrilla urbanism and, uh, low-cost temporary projects, often temporary, and then they become permanent. Um, that are done elsewhere where, you know, you don't, you don't need to like repave or like build in a curb extension in concrete in order to make a significant improvement to safety. You can use a can of paint and a few flower boxes. Like, that's, i- it can really be straightforward. And it becomes even easier if you have buy-in from the community because then you have someone right around the corner from that flower box who goes to water the flowers and keep the corner clean. And they, they develop, uh, a, a sense of ownership over that corner of their street. So, um, there are a lot of things that can be done. And there too, we butt up, I think the main challenge is butting up against institutional culture, right? When, when I go to our civil servants and I sit down with our traffic engineer and I say, yeah, but why can't we just like throw down some paint and some planter boxes and some ballards? They look at me like, oh god, another one of these crazy politicians that wants to run at a million miles an hour, right? Gotta do things properly. Gotta do things according to the book, which is understandable, right? If traffic engineers didn't do things by the book, they wouldn't be traffic engineers for very long. So, so there are challenges there in terms of, you know, again, turning the ship of state, getting people on board, giving, um, giving, uh, civil servants enough political cover to make mistakes and to test out new things and to take risks which they are really not used to as a rule. There are some really great things, uh, that can be done. And once again, I, I point to the plateau and Rosemont for a lot of these examples. Um, although the methods are starting to work their way out to other boroughs as well. And, uh, it doesn't take much. That's, that's, that's the thing. But again, you, you need to start at the top. You need to have a borough mayor that says, I want us to secure, you know, we don't have the budget. We don't have a huge budget. But I want us to find a way of securing every intersection in this neighborhood between now and the next election. Like, that's my goal. That's the political vision. That's the broad orientation. I will give you all the political cover. I will take all the flack, all the heat, all the complaints. I will give you everything you need. Give me proposals on how to make it happen. Like, that's basically the way it can or should work. And the devil's always in the details. But if you give a clear directive, clear vision, and you tell them, by the way, your annual evaluation is gonna, is gonna largely depend on whether or not you get this done, then everyone's interests become aligned. I think that we could, realistically, we could secure most of our intersections in the span of just a few years. It wouldn't be with real infrastructure. It would be with paint and planter boxes. But we could do it. And then as roads come up for repaving and sidewalks come up for fixing, then we make them permanent. So while we're digging it up anyway, time to make the improvements. It's possible. And so much of that can be done at the local level. Yeah, for some reason, it's considered radical and weird. Beats me as to why.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, these things are so fixed. And, uh, yeah, at least the, in terms of guerrilla urbanism, like you mentioned, maybe that's a way to kind of almost like trick people into buying in. Cause then it's like, oh, it's just not permanent, whatever. And then, but once it comes around to, to doing major changes, I think it helps in that direction.
Well, it's not so much a trick, and this is an important, I think, an important distinction. It's not so much a trick as it shows people. And again, especially as far as I'm concerned, in much more well-heeled neighborhoods, um, where people live very comfortably in their, you know, in their immediate bubble. It, it shows people that the things that they fear will come to pass often do not. All, all the things that they fear, oh, you know, the bikes are gonna take over. And you can't put, I still had someone tell me that you can't put curb extensions at every intersection cause it's gonna slow me down in my SUV, you know? Can't have that happening. You know, if you actually just start doing these things, you say, listen, if it goes really terribly, we'll take it away. We'll take it away. And then it doesn't go terribly. And people adjust a lot more rapidly than we think they do. That's what happened in the plateau. The first mandate, uh, for Projet Montreal on, on the plateau, they got elected, uh, what, November two thousand nine? Two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, it was just non-stop complaints. Oh, they're gonna drive this neighborhood into the ground. They're crazy. They're radicals. They're communists. They're trying to kill our local businesses. And then these changes were really implemented. People started adjusting. They started getting used to it and they started realizing, oh, you know what? This is actually, this is actually pretty nice. Yeah, this ain't too bad. You know, I've got a quieter neighborhood. There are fewer cars blasting down my street. It's easier to walk around, you know? It's, um, doesn't take much to, to show people that, you know what? Sometimes, sometimes there is a better way. We don't have to go whole hog immediately. But some paint and planter boxes, that doesn't seem like too tough a sell.
So we're, we're getting to the, the end of the night and discussion will work with our timer that we have right now. So I wanna think about, um, some real kind of actions that either we can do as individuals or collectively. We talked a lot about a lot of different things, so it's hard to, to narrow that down. But I'd just like to open it up to anyone who has any sort of ideas, whether it's, uh, action to take, uh, in government or, or other channels that you can have an influence in towards a more sustainable future and, and, uh, society. So, yeah, if we can think about that for the next so, yeah, if we can think about that for the next few minutes, does anyone have any ideas?
I guess I could say something. Yeah, I mean, I don't know. Actions, it's always a tricky question, I find, but yeah, I guess I think we should start to think of, I don't know. Maybe, maybe I won't say anything actually. I take that back.
No, just say, I don't know. We can, we can have crazy ideas. I don't know. We need
I want to hear from James. I haven't heard anything from James and Dylan as well. There's no idea that's too crazy to mention.
So let's go James, James.
Oh God, okay. So, I mean, yeah, I live on Bellmore and Sherbrooke.
Hey! Well, stomping grounds.
Exactly. And yeah, I'm currently doing my masters in urban planning at Dalhousie. And I brought up the Tarrbon bike path as an example in some of my classes and so did some of my professors about it and all that. And yeah, when Sue was there, just asked me her some questions about that. And it was interesting to hear a response about some of the citizen responses to that whole thing. And, you know, she was personally attacked pretty hard on that, which is not very fair. And, and yeah, just some of the, just an example, she brought up of one guy complaining that, oh, well now strangers are parking in front of his house because they don't park on Tarrbon anymore, which is like, well, it's not your street, it's a public street. So that's an asinine criticism. But as an elected official, that's what you kind of have to deal with, I guess.
Can't use that word.
It's just ridiculous, but you know. In one of my classes last week, we had a Halifax city councillor come in and give a talk and he was just recently re-elected. He's been a city councillor for the last, at least eight years or so. And when he was first elected, one of his friends pointed out that nine out of 10 people in his district didn't vote for him. You know? And so my kind of question going through this, and especially in terms of action and citizen feedback is the fact that, you know, borough councillors and a lot of them, the election numbers, the voting numbers just aren't very high at all.
Well, it's like nine out of 10 people didn't vote, period kind of thing, right?
Well, yeah, exactly. I mean, he
Turns out it's about 40% in Montreal.
Right.
On average, yeah.
So when we talk about change, I mean, yes, when people show up and voice their opinion for something, you're obviously going to take that into account, but if a lot of people aren't actually coming up during election time and saying, hey, these are the people I'm voting for, these are the policies I really want. It's hard to get a cohesive picture because you have to go piece by piece and be like, okay, some people want this in this area, but then, oh, some people don't want this in this area. And then how can you have a big strategic vision when you're dealing with all these smaller kind of moving pieces, you know? I mean, you were talking about that. It's like a big puzzle in general, you know? But yeah, I was just kind of, I just had a few questions earlier, but I didn't want to distract from the whole discussion and Toby was leading us in a certain way, so I don't want to
We got like one minute left, buddy.
Yeah, exactly. But, yeah, anyway, I'll leave it at that. I guess, just some questions for thought or food for thought, however you want to say it.
Closing remarks?
Dylan first? Or do not have time?
No, Christian, let's hear your closing remarks.
Me? Okay. I mean, difficult to follow up on any mention of, of the whole Tarrbon situation because that, that was a whole, that was, that was a saga for, for all of us. And, and yeah, it just goes to show that, you know, you can get elected, but then people, you know, as soon as you start touching on people's privileges, they, 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 they lose it. And the whole debate can very rapidly go from civil and civic minded to quite, quite toxic.
So yeah, sorry, this is going to end. So I'd, I'd like to wrap it up in a nice way. So if we just join back and we'll have like just a quick five minutes to, to end it.
I gotta run too, but if I'll, can I just end it with this? Like literally, I, I know it sounds cliche, but think global, act local. Like there's so much that we can do in the neighborhood. There's so much that you can push for on your street corner. Small changes add up. And that doesn't do it for everyone. And those, you know, some people get involved in federally and provincially and stuff like that, but there's a lot that we can do here in the neighborhood to, to make our city more sustainable.